It's seven oh four, I'd like to call on meeting to order. And Ally, if you do roll call.
Trustee Shaw.
Thank you.
Trustee Grantzian here, Trustee Hayes.
Here.
Trustee Friedman here, we have Trustee Zowey. And Church are absent but coming. Trustee Jerrigan is absent today.
I'd like to ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, of the common, indivisible, infinite, just as from. Thank you.
Right. So we have our agenda. Thank you Renee for putting this together and sending it out. Are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? You're none. I want to make sure people have had a chance to consider. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Is there anyone from the public online who would like to address the board? No one tonight? Okay. Moving right along, we have our March nineteenth, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty four. Board meeting minutes to approve, open to motion.
I'm the secretary.
Yes.
Move to approve the board meeting minutes of March nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Thank you, Trustee Friedman. I am second to approve all those minutes. Remind me, roll call?
We've been doing roll call for minutes, yes.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Grantzian.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Freeman.
I. Okay, Melissa and Carrie, we've approved our minutes for last month. Ooh, well under three minutes. Um, it's time for library director update. Is there anything, anything Renee, as you think about the agenda, you want to continue straight through?
I think so. My report will be brief so that we can spend most of the time in the new business, which is the meat of the meeting. Well, as per last board meeting, the recommendation was to add a section in the director's report for grants, so I just wanted to highlight that right off the bat and tell you that that's what I've done.
Thank you.
So going forward, and as we continue applying for more and more grants, we'll have regular updates in that section. I do want to mention that as of mid-March, our full-time adult services and technology manager won our medical leave, and they are expected to return June eleventh. I'm very grateful to the managers Katie and Eliza, who have assumed temporary responsibility of Martha's staff for direct reports, and are providing coaching and support for them during this time, so thank you very much. We also had an extended leave to, in our cataloging position during this time. I would say the management team really did a great job of prioritizing the work that needed to be done, deferring the work that could wait. And then Rachel Yancy, who is our tech, uh, technical associate, who helps with processing and acquisitions to support our cataloging librarian, really stepped up and was doing librarian-level cataloging work throughout this time, worked extra hours, learned new processes, and we are just so grateful. Laura has since returned to the library. This was her first full week back, and we're very happy to have her back. And she's been very grateful and expressed her thanks to the library for supporting her family's need. I'm very pleased to say that we received one of the grants that we applied for in the last month. The smallest one, but also very important to support new and innovative community engagement that we'll be doing to support our upcoming strategic plan, our master planning, to really invite the community to participate in those processes. So five thousand dollar check is on its way from Rails. I've already filled out the form to receive it. And I am still waiting to hear back on the status of the T-Mobile that is coming by the end of May. And we have a meeting through the Illinois State Library next week on Thursday, where the Illinois State Library will be reviewing in a virtual meeting all of the applicants. We are one of eight applicants for the remodeling for accessibility grant, of which we applied for for forty-five thousand dollars. So I'm very hopeful. I think our express need is perhaps stronger than other applications. Hello, Matt, welcome. I've got you right here. Janie's actually coming, so yeah, perfect.
But if you want to switch seats.
I mean.
First come, first served.
I suppose that's true. You totally could. I also wanted to say, as of last month, when Martha's leave began, I assumed her responsibility for all library communication. So I have received training on the website. I'm doing website updates. We had to de-prioritize the April digital newsletter to just keep things moving along, social media, things like that. And so I will be doing that until Gillian returns. She is scheduled to return on the last week of April, I think the twenty ninth. So I shouldn't have to do this too long, but was able to learn what I needed to do from our web host Net2 community to get some things posted and changed. And thank you to those of you that have supported some of that too, so.
I have a quick question about the library construction grant. You said that we are one of eight grant proposals. Do we have any sense as to how much they intend to release or how many they think they'll approve?
So that is the question that is unknown. Um, I've seen in previous years for this grant, they've approved as little as one, as many as multiple. And it's also unknown to us how much funding they have at their disposal. Welcome back, Janie, that you're here. I may find out in that meeting how much money they have to fund the various projects. And each project may be up to fifty thousand dollars. It doesn't necessarily mean all of them are fifty thousand dollars. For example, one year, someone just applied to get their elevator fixed to meet ADA codes, and it was only about ten thousand dollars. So I think it just depends on what Illinois State Library funding.
Thank you. Thanks for that addition to the background. All right, so you were on communications, or maybe to the next month?
Yeah, I'm doing some highlights here. Programming has been very strong. You may remember we pulled back in programming in the fall and in the winter planning months because we had some staffing challenges last fall. Spring quarter is really the first time that we were able to come back to a new normal of quantity of programs. And so March is the first month of our spring quarter, so what you'll see is a more robust offering of adults and other types of programs to, to align with our pilot hours too. So I'm kind of getting over the hump of the downsizing of programming from last fall and the winter. So really successful programming offerings. The last thing I'll say is on the back page of my director's report, there are a lot of reports coming out from all of these vendors, whether it's our indoor air quality or the asbestos and lead paint testing, or the water, the water testing. Next month, I will have the report from MCES Midwest Consulting Environmental Services. They did their testing just yesterday in the building. And we don't know the results until they take all of the samples and send them out for laboratory testing. So the goal with that is to identify if there's asbestos. My thought is there is, given the age of part of this building. But more importantly, where and how much? That will allow us to determine a cost for potential abatement, if and when any remodeling would happen. This is that first step in any of the master planning, so that we can have a sense of how much we're dealing with and which parts of the area of the library. The indoor air quality report was deferred to next month's building and grounds meeting, so I will have that, those results after it's shared with. We talked, I gave you copies for you to review, but we didn't really discuss it, so it's going to come next month. But I wanted to let you all know what was happening. I will say, I mentioned I've been doing training with our website company, Net2 Community. He identified an issue with Google Analytics. I think I mentioned last month our website numbers were down to zero. There's, there was an issue with the, the connection between Google Analytics and our database. And so not in time for this report, but in time for yesterday, he was able to fix the connection. So next month, you'll have updated numbers, so I apologize for that. I really, it's just a matter of staffing and not being able to address it right away. But we saw a nice increase in visits and circulation and in use. More people were in the library. We'll talk about that during the hours pilot as well, when we look at the heat map for March. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? The director's reports. Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the financial reports.
So the first report is the revenue and expenditures report from March of two thousand twenty four. Since we have received our PPRT payment back in January, there actually has been another payment to PPRT. As you may remember, it's paid out to the, to the various parts of the state eight times a year. And as we are approaching the end of our fiscal year, I checked in with the Tina and they did receive another disbursement this month. So that's why you see a total of four hundred and seven forty-eight dollars in the revenue column for this month of the, under PPRT. Um, I do want to mention that our library fees is trending higher than normal. The library fees are, that is the amount of money that someone who is out of district pays to receive library card access if they're in Knollwood or, what's the phrase? Thank you, thank you. Unincorporated areas. So this is a very, this is a quite variable number. It's just hard to tell every year who is going to apply to receive library card usage, but I'm happy to say it's higher than we expected. And then in revenue, the last thing I just want to say is we still have one month to report, but we are at forty-five thousand eighty-nine dollars for interest earned in this fiscal year alone, which is already more than two hundred percent of what we had budgeted. And it's more than what we have budgeted for next fiscal year too. Bill, you probably remember, we put forty-four thousand. So it's already higher than that number two. So I think that was, that was good budgeting on, on the part of the finance committee. And that certainly is helping us out a lot. The rest of the revenue and expenditures and the expenditure side, what I would say is, you know, we had various legal costs this year. We are at about five hundred and thirteen percent spent of legal services. We know many of the things we've already done, but I would say the policy committee has been really effective and active. We've gotten lots of policy work done this year as well, and as we'll talk about later, we are going to be discussing the Vale contribution and the IGA. And so the, our legal team has already done a lot of prep work with me and Bonnie evaluating our current contract. So those are just some of the costs from this year.
Adding to that advice that they've provided on some of the policy violations that have happened in the library, renewal, suspension, you know, et cetera, so. They, they're very, I mean, very efficient, very helpful in focusing on the issue at hand. But as predicted, that cost is up a little bit this year.
The rest of the expenditures, what I would say too is that the spending is, is, is a little all over the place, for lack of a better phrase. Last year, we budgeted for this fiscal year about two weeks into my position. I worked with the managers. We came together. They had never really budgeted before. It was a brand-new process, and we came up with a budget for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's what we're still working with. So even with my year law, I now have a year plus in terms of evaluating trends and spending, and we've made some changes. And of course, you all approved the budget for next year, which you have seen, there are significant reductions in many lines. So even though our individual lines, some are overspent, some are underspent, the end, the, kind of the end dollar amount is still within budget. And also, we're, we have already prepared for those adjustments for next year, having a whole year behind us to be able to plan and know where our expenses are better. And the last thing is, it's really on the bottom of page three, but it's also on the bottom of page five. If you look at the column on page five, there's only one number, year-to-date balance. And it says one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and eight cents. That's how much money we have left in this fiscal year to spend to cover for April costs. And anything else that we get an invoice for, for this fiscal year to charge back. So I looked at last year's numbers, because remember, our auditor said we, we were added, we added seventy thousand dollars to our fund balance. We were really ahead. We're also ahead this year. And I think a lot of that has to do with, as they told us, it was the interest. And we got a huge ad of the PPRT into our funds. But I also just want to acknowledge that even though you all have approved overage and personnel, building and grounds, there's still twenty thousand dollars at least that we're going to be able to transfer over to fund balance. And so on average, monthly expenditures range anywhere from fifty thousand dollars to over a hundred thousand dollars. I just wanted to give you that heads up now, that this is how we're trending for the end of the fiscal year. We're not going to know what the actual add to fund balances until next year's audit, but there's, there's additional work to do on spending. Because if we have this much money left over, I mean, it could have, could have been used in a lot of different ways.
No, I, I, I read this a little differently. And Bill.
Yeah.
Matt, other finance committee people, that's why I called them out. I believe Renee, that the, the year-to-date balance and the year-to-date budget, that's the full budget. Full budget doesn't reflect here.
Right, because this last number is with eighty-two, fund eighty and eighty-two.
Right, so year-to-date balance of revenues, one-two-nine-oh, so we collected more than expected. Year-to-date expenditures are only the year-to-date expenditures through.
Right, random march.
Oh, I get it. I get it. We're not getting any more revenue, most likely.
No.
Okay, okay.
I mean, unless I get another grant check and we can.
Right, 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 yes.
It's doubtful.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was, I was looking hard at these numbers before the meeting, and I'm like.
I think, yeah.
How does that happen? Because we're not getting any more facts or any of, never mind, sorry.
It's good to clarify.
Yeah.
Thank you. If I don't have anything more.
Well, the other thing is, we've got one hundred and forty-nine. Spend this, we're going to spend maybe seventeen next month.
That's what I said. Monthly expenditures range anywhere from fifty thousand dollars to over a hundred thousand dollars, depending on what expenditures you have.
So you've got the fifty there, and plus then we've got the PPRT sort of on there, so we're pretty close to, and the interest.
Yeah, I think it's the interest that's pushing us over. And there are a couple invoices, bigger invoices that we're paying. I was able to charge the laptops for work from home. Remember how we were going to wait to pay for that in new fiscal year? When I started looking at these numbers earlier this month, I was like, no, let's just do it this year. And then that money can be allocated for other tech. So I, so I know that that invoice is going to be paid out as well. So yeah, I just wanted to give you all a heads up what I was tracking.
I know previous years when I worked on the board, there was a concerted effort to try to minimize spending in April, so that we could make a big contribution, substantial contribution to the general fund reserve. How do you feel about that approach?
I would say that this year has been very difficult to track spending in general. So I still agree with that approach. It's just, the managers are new with the budgeting, and we've had various targets that have been moving. I think the biggest one has been salary and building. And then I think the biggest wildcard for me has been the interest. It's been hard for me to figure out when, how much interest we're getting month to month, and then plan to overspend. We've also had staffing issues that have meant our budget has been underspent more in advance. So for example, outreach is only about fifty percent spent. Jill has been out for almost two months now.
Right.
And so, all that said, we're still going to have that money to transfer over. It's not transfer, but to save for our fund balance. The twenty thousand dollars is still going to be there. We, though, as an organization, I think, just haven't been able to time our capacity to spending ahead of March and April, just because we've been working through some staffing.
Right. I mean, last year, fiscal year, because we just had the audit report right up there, about seventy grand went into general reserve fund.
Yeah.
About a dollar. I, I think we'll wind up with about seventy.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I didn't want to come into either the audit or even next month without you knowing that I've already done some analysis that we're, we are ahead. I mean, but I've also, I also know that we talked about, like, well, if the money is there, we should spend it. You know, I think about the approval that you all have given for the substitute librarian and the other positions. You know, that didn't move forward because I only had two applicants for the substitute library positions, and neither one of them were interviewable. And I've been waiting to do that until we adjust the salary to twenty-six dollars per hour compared to the twenty dollars an hour that it was posted at. We're going to get better applicants, and we'll be able to pay, you know, industry rate. I also would say that I haven't been able to find time to do that also, just with capacity. But my, my, my strategy to wait was to get better applicants because I already put more stuff. But I knew that that money had already been approved by the board in this fiscal year, so.
But the, most of the money going into the reserve is going to be the PPRT money that we got from the village, doesn't it?
Oh, interesting.
If you look at it that way, yes.
Yes.
Because that was about eighty.
Yeah.
Eighty-nine.
About what we.
Yeah. Good point.
And any extra is the added interest on top of. Thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments on the April finance report? Important monthly finance report because we're closing in on the end of the year. Or it's the March report, actually. We're in March. Like I said, jet lag. So open to a motion to approve the March revenue and expense report.
I'll move to approve the March revenue.
Thank you, Trustee Hayes.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Zowey. Roll call, please.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Trustee Grantzian.
Hi.
Trustee Zowey.
Hi.
Trustee Freeman.
I.
Melissa and Carrie, we've approved now checks.
There's only one I want to highlight, and it's the vote that you approved last month for the CBI infrastructure for upcoming security camera project. This is the fifty percent deposit for the hardware of sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So as you review and approve checks tonight, that fifty percent deposit will be mailed to CBI.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments on checks for the month? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve our checks numbered?
One-five-nine-seven-zero to one-five-nine-eight-four.
Thank you.
All the motions approved, checks one-five-nine-seven-zero, we need one-five-nine-eight-four.
Is there a second? Uh, thank you, Trustee Zowey with the first, Hayes with the second. Roll call votes.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Trustee Grantzian.
Hi.
Trustee Zowey.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Friedman.
I.
I submit. Thank you. Seven-twenty-eight. I've skipped an agenda item, committee reports. So let's go back up to that. So committees that reported that met this month, Building, Grounds, and HR. Let's start with Building, Grounds.
Okay. Have hardly had time to think about that, but we did meet, what, about ten days ago or so, okay? And went through.
The carpet.
Thank you.
Which is on the agenda for later tonight.
Yes, and we, we had someone come in and speak to us at, in depth about what kind of, this particular carpet tile is no longer available, and we've used up all we had in reserve, but he said that he thinks he might have some stash away somewhere.
No.
I thought he was going to look.
Um, he said if we wanted to do small spaces of our library in, in any of those sections that he proposed, he, he could have a small amount of carpet that he could lend us that we wouldn't have to pay for. That's extra from an old job that would just get us to any sort of master planning project. So that's where, it's a good, yeah, that's what you're remembering.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. He did address why some of them are coming up. And what has happened with substrate, why there's waviness, especially right in the entryway, and as you walk towards the drinking fountain and so forth, the restrooms. And sounded like he is very, very knowledgeable and has done a lot of libraries, a lot of public buildings. And I think that they, you know, he did a good job selling me, I'll tell you that. Well, he said that when this redo was done, when was it, two thousand and five, maybe, there was a, there was a remo, uh, revamp and a remodel, and that's when this carpeting was put down, and they did a lot of stuff on the cheap. It was like, yes, yeah, they.
He said fifteen to twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's, yeah, yeah, but still, even with that.
It was two thousand and ten, right? The remodel was two thousand and ten.
Oh, it was two thousand and ten, okay, so, so, yeah, that's, that's so good, but also the fact, just the fact that there's those dips and so forth. You know, that I guess they, they tried to put some kind of patchwork in, in some of the dip areas and kind of degrade it. So I, I have a lot of confidence in the style of, yeah, a lot of good records.
I can provide more context when we get to that item. Agenda two.
Yeah.
The carpet was the major item on the agenda. I passed out copies of the indoor air quality report, which you all are reviewing for next time. And then, like I said, the water report is still not back.
Are we still waiting for that?
Yes, yes. And then the final thing was the three quotes for the environmental report, the asbestos and the lead. And so we went through those three quotes, and I told you who we would be working with.
Right, right, that was kind of a slide up.
Yeah, and it was, and they did the work. I don't remember when you came in, but they did the work yesterday.
Oh, excellent.
To sample and quantify, and so.
See any chips or anything.
I'll show you later, but.
When she described the sampling process, I was thinking.
And, and they do need at least a quarter-size piece of every single material throughout the library.
Pretty extensive.
It is, um, the full day, the full day, but he did both the lead paint and the, the asbestos sampling. In less than two weeks, we'll have a full report, and I've asked already for him to save the date for next board meeting, so that he can come and present, so.
Happy to know what it would be for. Have to get my head in baby.
Thanks, Janie. HR committee.
HR committee. So I believe that we met with, we met with Renee on March twenty-second to complete her review process, and I think everyone should have received a copy of her review. So thank you everyone for your input. So we were able to meet with Renee, and then we also have a combined HR and finance meeting, whatever say, to discuss next steps as far as evaluation of salary. And then I believe we also have to finish the review process with a closed session.
That will be next month.
Yeah, third floor, full board.
Yeah, after the combined meeting, then we'll do with the finished evaluation for.
And this got. So those are. Um, so those are our next steps. And then I believe the H R committee will probably, I'll be on a little bit of a break. Um, we're gonna delete our calendar for next year, so if we're ready, but I think after that, we will be meeting just as needed.
And I just wanna acknowledge and thank all of you for contributing to the performance evaluation and my growth and learning and the staff had a really good turnout. Despite some staffing differences, we had a really good percentage of return with the survey and, um, you know, feedback is, is how one grows and, and learns more. So thank you all. I really appreciate your time doing.
All right. Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
That's H R and Athaliaen Browns. Cool. So now we're on number ten, new business. And we have a number of action items for new business. Renee, will you lead us through these, please?
Yes. So the first topic of the action items is the C B I project. Um, I am currently working with C B I to plan a security and enhance safety and security system throughout the library. It includes a variety of projects, um, mid, within the overall project. And it involves some things that you have already approved as like last month, you approved the quote for the hardware for the security cameras. Um, in your board packet, um, is a copy of the project plan as it stands, as of, um, just at the end of last week. I just wanna walk you through what you have in front of you. Um, on the left side in the first column in bold, you will see the names of the different components of the project. So in, um, the first section would be, um, infrastructure. And then the next section is the security server. And then the indoor cameras, on the next page, the outdoor cameras, the door access control, and then speakers. This is the paging system that we are using our grant funds for. Um, to allow us to be able to page in the whole building. And so this project plan is showing you at various stages where we are with each one of those projects. Um, in many ways, we're at the beginning of all of them. Um, and what I appreciate about this, it shows you exactly for each section, you know, have we scoped the project? Have we quoted? Has there been a down payment provided? Um, the ordering of the equipment, we've already started receiving some of the equipment for this work. And then, um, the actual install. And so obviously with a big technology project like this, the infrastructure and the cabling needs to happen first. So, um, that's why infrastructure is listed first. Um, and then you'll see on the right hand with these long bars, this is to show you kind of tracking for dates. Um, at the top, you'll see April and May, June, July. These are, um, not inflexible, but they're pretty known. Um, basically, we wanted to make sure that we spread out the payments across the different fiscal years. I've already looked into next fiscal year when we get our first, um, payment of property taxes. So we're not paying all of the fifty percent deposits right at, at the same time and draining, um, our fiscal year budget. Um, because what has to happen is we have to pay for it first and then submit for reimbursement with the grant. Um, so I do, I do wanna make sure that we have the funds to be able to do that. And I know we do, but I do wanna spread it out over time. Um, the majority of the actual installation and, um, uh, equipment, um, installation is gonna be happening either throughout the summer or early fall. So I do think there's gonna be some flexibility needed in this timeline because um, even though they can do a lot of their work before hours and on weekends, which is really good for us, summer is our busiest time. We don't want all of this happening at the same time as when we have people checking in for summer reading. I wanna make sure there's the least amount of disruption available or, um, least amount of disruption for our patrons. So they work pretty much off hours to be able to do a lot of this, um, work. Um, and then, you know, they're projecting June. I don't think that's gonna happen. I think it's gonna be closer to July or even August when it's finished, but I just wanted to show you that, you know, we're, we're working together tracking the project using this document so that you know what's coming up. Um, and then after the project is done and it's fully paid for, then I submit all of my invoices and copies of, um, checks dispersed to the grant. And remember, this is the grant from two thousand and nineteen that was going to fund the other remodel. But as long as it's a remodel and construction, we can change the scope of it. Um, and so then we would get our checks to be deposited and reimbursed for this project. Um, yeah.
I'm just curious to, uh, wonder if we're paying a premium for the work meant to be here off hours.
No, it's part of the, um, it's how they charge. It's part of our C B I contract. It covers the workers themselves. The money that we're paying is for the equipment and the installation, but they cover the cost of the workers coming off hours.
I see. Yes. Very nice.
Yeah. So the next couple documents you see in your packet, um, they're actual product sheets. So the first one is really, um, the setup of what the security camera, um, hardware is gonna look like. So the first one, the video insight seven, that's the look at the two monitor setup with the software that allows us to track um, for the security camera. And of course, training is all included with all of this and we'll find space for these two monitors that are effective use of space. Um, the next document you have in your packet is another quote. So when we sat down to plan this whole project, my goal was to try and keep it to close to a hundred thousand dollars as possible. Um, and we've been able to do that. Um, I think there's a variation of either seven or ten thousand, which could be covered in, in many other ways. Um, but we're able to cover all of these projects within the one hundred thousand dollar grant that we were given. So the action items we'll discuss, the first one is, um, uh, the actual indoor cameras. Um, and the second one is the outdoor cameras. And the third one is the door access control system. Um, there are some additional product sheets in here as well as a map to show you what, um, specifically the outdoor cameras. I'll have the indoor camera map for next month. Um, actually, I'll probably have it for Thursday's technology committee meeting, fast forward then. Um, to show you what kind of coverage the cameras will give us across the whole property. The most complicated part is actually our entrance, um, which seems fitting. Um, but, you know, as you can see, they've used different elevations to try and get the cameras to get as much um, coverage in the front entrance as possible. Um, you know, one of my thoughts is going to be to ask them to change from the ninety-degree camera to a hundred and, um, eighty camera so that we can get a better coverage, because this is our front entrance. If someone falls, we wanna be able to see that. If there's theft, we wanna be able to see that. And right now, anything that's not in teal is not covered with the camera. I mean, technically you can see, if you look at six and seven, it gives you the best line of sight in those teal triangles. And there is some missed, um, location, but you could see it from far away. You just can't see close up if anything actually happens. So we did a whole walk around the perimeter when we were originally creating this map. Um, to make sure that we, uh, I told them all the places that I wanted to make sure that we got coverage for. Um, this is what the current draft is. And like I said, I'm gonna be suggesting an, an edit or a change to the front entrance to make sure we have the right technology to give us the most coverage. And I don't think that we, we currently have that. So this is mostly draft form still too. Um, you have some more product sheets to show you what the indoor cameras look like, what the outdoor cameras look like. There are two types of outdoor cameras that were being, that are being used. Um, the multi-directional is the one that gives us about two hundred and seventy degrees of coverage. Um, the smaller camera, that's the one that gives approximately ninety degrees of coverage. So, um, they've used a variety of those throughout the perimeter of the building to give us, as I mentioned, the coverage that is displayed on the map. Um, and then the last product sheet is the, um, door access system, which I think staff are just so thrilled about. Um, I know I am, um, but it will provide a level of safety that this building has never had before. It'll provide a level of ease of access for staff as well. Um, and so I don't have the interior map yet of where all of these will be going, but we have discussed that and I'll present that at a future meeting. Um, and so this is a similar system to a badge access system where all staff will have a badge um, as they are, um, employed with the library. I'll have a software program that I'll manage um, the active status of each employee. Um, you know, if it's lost, I can press a button and turn that off so people can't use it anymore. Really, twenty-first century, I'm very excited about this. Um, and, you know, one thing that is, that does need to be worked out is on the front door. So we're probably not going to badge access the front door because the museum enters the building and that is a shared entrance. Um, but there will be badge access throughout the exterior of the library as well as inside the library. Um, and I'll have those plans presented to the tech committee as well, but also to the full board. I know we want to know that. Last thing.
Questions, comments?
Oh, sorry.
I, I have one.
Yes.
Elevator. I mean, we can get in. We can get into the lobby.
So that's the, that's the thing that we're working right now on, um, with the, with the, um, with C B I. You can badge access an elevator. So you can.
I was gonna say, you could do that and then I'll take care of it, because otherwise you could go in there and get to the lot.
Right, exactly. And so I wanna, and we can also badge access during certain times of the day. So for example, after hours, when the library and museum are closed, I could have the badge access be required. So our cleaning crew would have a badge, yes, they could get everywhere they need to go. But then the, the example is Sundays. So Sundays, the museum is open mostly. The library currently is not open on Sundays. We wanna be able to make sure that the museum, the public who's using the museum can get everywhere. Um, and then I'll, the question I have out to the village right now is for emergencies. So can we badge access? There's a specific door on the second floor in that vestibule where all the collections are. Um, it's, there's a fire door right there into the library side. Um, we may or may not be able to badge access that door, but the problem, we want to be able to do it, but code may not allow us to. That's the door that you and I have been talking about. Um, so, uh, we're, we're in the thick of it, planning. Um, I'm really excited to see C B I come forth with such great project planning. I mean, I've worked with them now for over a year and I've worked with them in other libraries in Illinois and they're, they really know what they're doing and, um, Rich is somewhat of the technology software guy that's helped out with training and things through C B I. He's worked at this library for many years and know, knows staff and us very well.
Okay. So I just wanna make sure I'm clear. The, the plan right now is to badge access the elevator during certain hours?
That, that will be the plan and that is the plan. I don't have the exact approval yet from the village that I can do that for, it's probably gonna be the fire department.
Mm-huh.
Um, um, but that is our, that is our plan. We're still pretty further out, but, um, in the, the cost analysis of how many badge readers do we have in the building, that's gonna be one.
And only, uh, the front door, they've got twenty, twenty cameras and the map shows nine.
Yeah, it, that includes, um, uh, which one are you looking at? Indoor or outdoor?
Well, it's a, um, this one here has a nine and then the rest of them are going outdoors, same exact.
So it's actually the reverse. So I don't have the indoor map yet for you. I'm going to have the indoor map. Uh, we're the three different levels. I'm gonna have that for the tech.
Okay.
Meeting on Thursday. Um, they're still working on it and then I'll bring it to the full board the following month after. Um, but the quotes are for different things. So the outdoor security cameras, um, there are several different. Yes, yes. And then the twenty are the in, interior. So that's the last thing I wanted to say. The reason I split this up into several quotes was really mostly for financial transparency to the community. I've already talked to our lawyer and we don't have to go out for bid for this because there is a specific clause um, in library and government law that says, um, telecommunication needs are exempt from the public bidding process. And so this is telecommunication needs. And so the benefit of that is that we get to work with our technology provider service who was able to get us the equipment, who's able to integrate it all together. They already know our building, they already know our staff and so.
I think, like you said, Renee, our current contract covers the cost of labor on site.
Absolutely. And training, yeah. So there, it's, it's really a, a win-win.
Yeah, so we have a map for outdoor, the nine, but we, we don't have a map for indoor. We think we'll have it on Thursday.
I asked them, yes. Yeah.
Will, uh, the elevator have a camera?
The current plan is no, but that's not to say that we can't add it later, at a later date. Um, every space.
It's advisable, but I do know I notice them when I'm in elevators.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, I've not noticed them in libraries with elevators, but I will tell you that we have at least three or four in that vestibule on, and on each floor, because you have to be able to get the front entrance and the elevator space fully, um, seen by the security camera. And because of the low ceiling and because of the length of the vestibule, you can't do that with just one camera. So like if someone was leaving the library really quickly, maybe they fell by the elevator. You wanna see that up close. And if someone's, you know, going in and out or like, I don't know why this example is coming to mind, but like breaking into the museum. You know, you wanna be able to see that up close and you can't do that with just one camera. So even the vestibule is pretty. There are a lot of cameras in that space.
Just for clarification, but on the indoor security camera, so are we using the outdoor in, or indoors?
Yes, because of the way some of our second floor spaces are. So if you go to the second floor with the big angled ceilings and the big long windows, we talked about one specific area by those back steps. Um, it would be much easier to have one that's either a hundred and eighty or, um, two seventy, because that way we can get this pathway down where our study tables are, we can get this pathway down and then we can kind of, we can also get the stairs. So, yeah, good spot on that. Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Any other questions about the project plan? Timeline, the detail of the equipment that we have, um, thus far?
Just a comment that I'm excited. Very.
I will pass that on to staff who will share your excitement and happiness.
Sure.
I have a quick, uh, analog question about security. I'm guessing right now that means staff have keys.
Yes.
Uh, is the plan then to collect those keys and rely only on badging? Is it like just managers also have analog, like just thinking about?
Mm-hmm. We, I have been thinking about that. Um, a little bit of background. We don't have a directory of all the people that have keys right now. Um, that was one of my first questions when I started here and that hasn't been tracked. There are people out in the community that may have keys, that probably do have keys that I don't.
To the museum side.
Yeah, because for a while there, anytime somebody new would come on, on the museum board, they did.
No sign of. And the, that museum, that museum board key, Janie would open the front vestibule and the museum side.
And, and get you into the museum, but as I said, finally, it took, it took a long time for the penny to drop. But I realized that, yes, you can get into the library.
Yes.
If you get into the vestibule because of the elevator. I am embarrassed to tell you how long it took me to figure that out, but I did, I get it.
So would there be thoughts around rekeying that?
I have strong thoughts that I have not presented to the museum yet, but I, I do have strong thoughts on rekeying.
Just something to consider, like putting all this money into an expensive security system only to have somebody.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And also the, the, the other thing that just occurred to me is what about power outage, because.
Yeah.
Lyndy and I have talked about this. I mean, there, there are concerns to be worked out still, I would say.
Is that something we can, um, add a note for the building and grounds to consider, like rekeying and rethinking?
I mean, that's pretty operational. I think, you know, the biggest question is just working with the museum to make sure that we can find a solution that meets the museum's volunteer needs, um, and the library's safety needs, which sometimes are in conflict with each other, just admittedly.
And so to be clear, badge access is library side only. The museum will still enter and exit using keys. And so to be clear, badge access is library's side only. The museum will still enter and exit using keys.
That's the current plan. That's the current plan. Um that's not to say I couldn't issue a badge to like say the director of the museum or like the one paid staff person. And then, you know, I would manage their access. And then if they were to move on and another director comes in, then I would end that access, you know. I, I now have the ability to manage access because it's all badge.
As you should, because we live.
Yeah, so um just a little side note. The museum staff used to come into the staff area with the key box in the staff um space with their cubicles. To get the museum key to open the museum side of the building. I started and I didn't know who was walking through our staff spaces. I remember there was, it was either Mark Dewar or someone else. And so I started asking about this process and it's just always how it's been done. And you know, our staff space has purses, has private information, you know, it's all out there. And the volunteers, though I completely respect Kathy's decisions to hire volunteers, we don't know who these people are. And so the museum, Kathy and I talked for a little bit and found a solution that works for her staff now. They have a key box on the outside of the museum where her volunteers um go and open. And so they don't have to come to our side anymore. Not that we don't want them there, it's just really a safety process.
I'm not like that, but now they have a door counter.
Yeah.
It eliminates that everyone discount.
I appreciate the openness of the transparency and talking about this. This is important.
Right. Uh any other questions about the CBI projects, information presented tonight? We do have a series of actions on the, this quote. Again, this is the um. State of Illinois grant covering this project. And uh I think it'll be longer soon. So do, how, how do you wanna go one by one here?
Just take each action individually. I've named them by the quotes that they are.
Alright, so I'm open to a. Motion to approve. Why don't we start with the outdoor security cameras? Cause we kinda have the most information of that. We have the map. You know, there's nine of them. We know it's the full building, three sixty. Is there a motion to approve the CBI quote for the outdoor security cameras?
I'll move to approve the CBI quote for outdoor security cameras, an amount of twenty thousand and five thousand.
Twenty thousand four hundred? No, that's still access, my bad. Yeah, twenty thousand one oh five. Thank you, Trustee Freedom and, and there was a second on the board. Thank you, Trustee Church. This is money. We'll do a roll call.
Trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Church.
I.
Trustee Grantana.
I.
Trustee Zoude.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Friedman, I.
Hey, motion passes. Next, the door access control system. We have a quote from CBI for the door access control system in the amount of twenty one thousand four hundred. Is there a motion to approve?
I so moved.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Um I'll second this. Trustee Shaw.
Want to call Trustee Shaw?
I.
Trustee Church.
I.
Trustee Grantana.
I.
Trustee Zoude.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Friedman, I.
Okay, passes. Right, we're going back up to indoor security cameras. I did this cause I didn't know if there might be more debate of discussion. Or what have you, since we don't actually have the map of the indoor um security cameras. I do know time is of the essence to keep the project moving because the grant has an expiry date. They've estimated, I worked with Renee on mapping and, and you spoke specifically about, yes, the quote does have a couple outdoor cameras. Because of the area we need to cover, like those back stairs from. Nonfiction, travel guides, the young adults down toward, uh when does that come out? I'm thinking.
The showroom.
Right in front, yeah, you kinda turn, you know, right near in front of the showroom and the copier. Okay, so the indoor security camera quote from CBI is in the amount of thirty five thousand one hundred forty-three against twenty cameras, not, not nine. Um is there a motion to approve?
I so moved.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Church. Is there a second?
Awesome.
Thank you, Trustee Hayes.
Trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Church.
I.
Trustee Beth Young.
Uh, Trustee Zoude or Trustee Hayes.
Trustee Freeman, I.
Thank you very much. I have a staff meeting on Friday. I am so excited to be able to tell them all about this. Thank you for your support.
Okay, that brings us to item ten B. Um the Bleak contribution and the village intergovernmental agreement. Okay, so. Renee inquired. Few weeks ago to the village about the Bleak contribution. During her first year, the Bleak contribution, which is outlined in the IGA. That describes how the village, the library and the museum came together to acquire the property at one two seven. Which is now museum for two floors and our preschool area and youth activity room, lower level. Um it did uh have a set number that increased by year for inflation for the village to contribute toward the maintenance of the building. When one reads this agreement, it reads like, well, you know, we're creating this museum is for the benefit of, of our community. And the village is gonna help pay a portion of the costs for maintaining the space. When Renee asked the village, like, hey, you know, just call and see what's happening with the Bleak contribution. As it has been called in our budget for a number of years, twenty-five to be exact. Um they said, well, the intergovernmental agreement has expired, so therefore we're not intending to pay it.
How much was its contribution?
Expected to be about ten thousand dollars. So Renee and I have talked about a couple of potential options. Okay. Um and in doing so, right, so we dug through the IGA. There's a separate lease that was signed a few months after the IGA, maybe six months after the IGA for the museum to take. Occupancy of the space. That lease has since been renewed for ten years. As provided for in the original twenty-five-year-old IGA. Get where I'm going with this.
Well, there's a clause that says regardless of if the um lease is renewed by the museum. The IGA ends and it lapses at the twenty-five-year mark. With the village, with the village.
With the village, and there was no. No um addressing what would happen as we both.
So the reason this all came to light, I think was PPRT. Because we started asking questions about what the village was paying, what we were paying. They were starting to have conversations about, well, we cover your insurance, how much is that? Um you know, the auditing and so forth. And so, you know, I remember we talked individually. And it seems that there was a consensus among the board, we should have clarified rules. We should know what the village is responsible for and what the library is responsible for in terms of financials. And we would support the idea of an IGA. I was quoted by Dan Dorfman saying that. Um and yet we need to see the specifics. And so since then, I've been told by Drew that they are drafting the new IGA. For the library that would identify what those roles are.
Right, in January, the village committed to draft an IGA, a new IGA.
Yes. And so when we, when I asked about um the Bleak contribution. The response was, well, until we, basically, it's a negotiating conversation. That we may not get that amount again, or we may, we have to figure it out in the new negotiation process. For the new IGA. And until that's determined, we wouldn't receive payment. Now, there is another clause in there that says the village will cover electrical, water, gas.
Snow removal.
Snow removal for the library and museum properties during this IGA. Now, our lights are still on, we still have gas. Um so there is some topic for discussion within their own um ways of following. The IGA that has expired.
So the point at hand right now is in regard to the Bleak contribution, right? Because whether it's repairing the pipe that sticks out of the side of the building over there, which cost, I think. Repair that happened this fiscal year. Or the painting of this side of the building, which includes painting of the museum side, that happened this year. The, the, I just, A, wanted to make the full board aware of it and B, um you know, see if anyone had any. Insights or suggestions. Renee and I have drafted some correspondence that um I will send to Regis. Essentially saying, the village was supporting the museum. The library was a pass-through agent in receiving these funds, cause we pay the bills for a whole building. And the museum has the deal of a lifetime of a ten-dollar annual rent. So we're paying. Market rate for services to support a museum being in this building, supporting the building. But we don't receive that kind of rent from our tenants. So um why would they want to stop supporting having a museum?
I also think there's the conversation that Regis had with us when he came here. Saying his express support for the library. I think the phrase was, a cash injection is needed, um clearly. And, you know, I actually also asked Bettina about the Valee contribution, not knowing if. You know, and she said, I don't have the authorization to share that um and, and send that payment to you. Um so the direction that the village administration is going with is not providing this. Contribution in this fiscal year or until we have an IGA signed.
And said signed IGA. You know, I, what would. Most likely have, have retroactive effect. So.
Right, so we for, potentially forego the Valee, Valee contribution in this fiscal year.
I don't really understand. What, what about the museum? What are they doing? How are they part of the conversation?
They are um a tenant. And according to the original IGA, their relationship with the library is under a specific lease. The IGA itself is a document that also covers the village's responsibility to the library. And that's what section all of this is under. As a tenant, you know, you're not responsible for all of the utilities. That's covered by. According to this IGA. This is covered by the library.
So the village decided to put the museum in and then gave, so then that side of the IGA. And now the library is responsible for, even though the village created.
Correct. I mean, correct.
As, as this IGA expired. It relinquished the village from any financial obligation to the museum. Now, what they would probably say is, no, that's not true because we insured the whole building.
Right, they haven't taken us off their insurance either.
Well, and they insure the whole building, so they would insure an event that might happen, a trip and fall on the museum side. They are insured, let's just say a flood. If a flood happened only on the museum side, the village insurance covers it. So it's um. It's not black and white and um.
You know, the museum not gonna, they're not gonna do anything to like help advocate so that you can get the fund, the library, because it's like.
That's, that's an interesting question.
It helps both of us. If, if they're a part of the conversation and I feel like it adds another dimension. Because it's like, it sometimes feels like what, we have to keep going to the village to talk to them. And so we look like. We're by ourselves, but it's, it, it is, it was both of us, both of us to have this happen and to have it. It would benefit all of us if we were both part of the conversation. We can get, we can talk to the museum and get, have them come to the table with us. So we're not.
That's what the intergovernmental meetings always are. It's always museum, library, village, super trees.
And so the museum is helping to talk to Drew as we're like, because we're, we have to make steps, right, in order to make sure that like the IGA. Still covers all of this, you know, and so, so the museum's helping to, to help move this conversation along.
I.
They're talking.
Say they are, Janie.
Oh, you don't think they're.
I've already talked, so I've already spoken to Kathy O'Hara one-on-one. We have our official intergovernmental committee tomorrow morning at ten AM. Bonnie will be an observer. During which this will definitely come up, cause it's an agenda item. I put this on the agenda to talk about the IGA and the current situation. I mean, I think there's support for what you said, Jenny, that there is absolutely a role that the museum could play. I, I don't know if the museum would play that. I can, I, based on conversations I've already had with um Kathy, I'm not sure.
I mean, I understand that they're listed as a tenant, but they're, but that's just, I would consider that a formality. And it's something that I think the library should not, I feel very strongly that. Both parties need to come to the table in order to make it an effective discussion.
And I think the current museum directors form a role as village president complicates things. I think the current museum board member of Mark Dewar, who also is, has a relationship with the village. Also complicates things. So that's why I say I'm really not sure. If the museum would play an advocacy role, despite if we think they should, I don't know if they would.
The, the um, the IGA with the library to the village, that's one being developed right now.
Apparently, they said they would start drafting it in J A, right?
Tag that on in some way, to make that we are gonna be responsible for the maintenance of there. As opposed to having the separate one uh that ran out.
We, we could tack it on, but I hesitate to not make a formal request. For it during this fiscal year, cause it's supposed to be paid in this fiscal year. And the amount is known, it's the.
There's an algorithm.
There's an algorithm with the CPI or some sort of in, increase year over year. Um and the IGA we have with the village that covered the property. It's really, it covers the property of one-two-seven. Was in effect for every month of this fiscal year. So that's another. Yep.
And just, just, I mean, whose responsibility is it gonna come out that should have renewed the IGA? Would it be us or maybe them, or is it just one of those things?
So they've already said that they're drafting it and I have, we have yet to see any draft. Um I would say that it's really just luck and my newness. I was brand new as a director and just kinda getting this all. Um I mean, I definitely missed it, but also, yeah, where's the responsibility? Yeah, yeah.
So that, that'd be just one, maybe one way or like said around it, that, that could help.
Right, that's sort of what you've said was you could renegotiate it.
Yeah.
With this new IGA, ask for it, but all of that is up for negotiation.
Another option is we, we just extend the current IGA for up, up. Up until we sign a new one. We, there, there are also in, in, my husband's a real estate attorney, so I know enough to be dangerous. If you have a lease with somebody and the lease expires and the tenant still stays there, the lease actually continues, even though it has terms. The tenant is still in the building. So we've provided the IGA and the leases to our attorneys and said, hey, we've gotta renegotiate this, this IGA contract. It's twenty-five years old.
Yeah.
And expired. And um we've, so we've asked them to start helping us ensure we create an IGA that. Holistically represents the needs of the library.
And, and just, just helping, on the tenant agreement, that's an everlasting ten dollars a year.
Until the third renewal.
So thirty years, right, essentially, it's three, ten year.
Ten years.
They get up to three more renewals, so two thousand fifty. They get up to three more renewals, so two thousand fifty.
I think two more.
Well, they just did one, so, but the lease says they get up to three, and so they already enacted their first one, you all receive that in your January board packet. The letter from Kathy, um, so they're in their first renewal.
Jenny, thank you for your. Thoughts and comments, we will be discussing it tomorrow morning.
So just to clarify, the village is not attending tomorrow's meeting. My question to them was, yeah, I followed this in your emails, um. My question to the village was, what is the role of the village at the intergovernmental meeting now that the I G A has lapsed? What is the role? And they said, well, it's good to be consistent, and then I said, well. Or they asked what the agenda items are, they're mostly building, and then this topic. And so, um, they said, we're gonna opt out of attending, because it's just building related discussion, but. If there's no I G A, there's no intergovernmental committee, this, and that was my reason for asking, what is this role? Because if Bettina was gonna be coming to these, coming to these meetings, we have no I G A. It feels like an oversight of this process that is undue if there's no contract. In place, so in your emails, that's what I explained to you, Mark and Jay, um, and Kathy. And so it really is just a meeting, but I'm still, I've still put it as an official intergovernmental committee meeting, since you will be there and there's a quorum, and there's gonna be discussion of building. But the village will be attending.
So tomorrow would be an opportunity to, like what Jenny said, is, is get. The museum on board as an advocate. Um, the other question I have, because there is so much like question around the roles and where that was part of what we hope this intergovernmental agreement. Um, outlined, and if the village has not yet acted on drafting that up. Um, what's to stop us from documenting, saying this is our understanding, let's look at it laid out on paper together and. Tell me where you think this is correct or incorrect.
That could be an approach, I remember when we talked to Julie, she said, we could draft it, this was months ago. But then when the village said, we'll draft it.
At their expense. Even less than a full agreement, like not even Julie, which, just like from the library, from the board and the director's point of view, this is how we understand the roles. Let's, where are we disagreeing, like even just a table of like, these are the things. Uh, because I also want to acknowledge that. The relationship with the village has had stress in the past year, um, and. I think there's benefit to approaching it with collaboratively, rather than in a way that could be interpreted as accusatory. Um, because it feels fragile. Right now, and I wonder if it's just a matter of, we haven't gotten this draft from them, they said they would do it, those are facts, we can acknowledge those. What can we do to jumpstart, to provide some sort of like perspective to help build from? Uh, because I fear that we're getting into territory that.
There's one thing that we don't know, we don't know if Regis knows that the village is withholding the Vale contribution. We don't know if he knows that, because this is a very operational decision that Drew has made and directed his staff to do. The conversations Bonnie and I have had have been about informing Regis about this. Um, there was a difference of opinion from the village administration with the P P R T versus the village board. The village board became much more supportive of the library and expressing that. Gave us more money than the village administration decided in that initial proposal. And so I think even just. From my perspective, there's confusion for what they're actually. They're saying one thing and, and doing another, and I, it's not clear to me their intent in doing that.
And it may be also the reality that there is a, a lack of agreement or understanding between the administration. That's not our problem to solve, um. And I'm wondering if it starts with, here's what we see and understand, let's talk to the administrator, let's talk to the, to Regis as the board president. Like, let's get both of those, where they can then also identify, ooh, like, I thought we were here, and you think we're here, and we need to figure it out internally, but also like. Laid out on the table, because I think here we have a more. Shared understanding between our board and director. So why not maybe start there, where we're also putting in maybe some of the. The work to, to kind of move in, um, but in a way that feels productive and. Sort of like airing it out.
Would it be something from the direct, the library director and the board collectively? I mean, why not? The reason I ask is because when the board issued the letter about the P P R T to their board, that was received. In a different way.
Were received by the whole village board. There were discussions between myself and Regis prior to, so that's kind of where we are in this. At this moment on Valeet contribution, um, and. To some extent, the village I G A.
So like, would it, would it make sense for Bonnie to bring that and say, hey, our board has talked about this, this is. Understanding, she talks to Regis about it. I think there's also benefit to saying like, uh, there's a sub. Part of that, right, which is like the lead contribution, if we do not receive this, this is the amount of financial. Like, well, we are incurring on behalf of a non-library entity, which I believe would have some legal implications on tax dollars used, I would assume. Um, but.
Contribution from the village is also tax dollars.
But if the library is using library allocated tax dollars to then pay for services from a non-library entity. That would, to me, feel confusing as a taxpayer.
I, I definitely support Bonnie talking to Regis, that's one of our first things. We agreed on that, right?
Yeah, and then just having saying like, this is, you know, if, if this is no longer, you know, the library is incurring ten thousand dollars per year. That are non-library expenses, are you willing to publicize that to your taxpayers and like. I think there's a, a place to like, put it all in one, and I would throw my hat in the ring with this very convoluted statement. Lack of sleep, I'm also with you Bonnie, my brain's not. Well, we'll be happy to help like, figure out a way where this could go on paper and we could document it, right, like that's another thing. It will be nice for our board in ten, fifteen years from now to say like, oh yes, here is the correspondence or whatever. Between the two entities, to see the evolution of this relationship, so I would be happy to pitch in there. If that would be helpful, but.
Yeah, and so just like P P R T, right, Renee came back from. You know, Director's University, made the whole board aware of it, and then we, the two of us kind of pursued it together. Um, and then.
Brought it back to the board.
Brought it to the board, the board, so we're kind of at that point right now, where. Renee and I are aware of it, we want to make the rest of the library board aware of it, as we now reach out to the village.
I'm sensing those sense of timeliness because of the end of the fiscal year, so that's, we're talking like two.
No, actually, um, so they, if it's for a fiscal year, if it's retroactive, the books don't close until June. So if the payment is, just like if we get our point zero five percent of our property taxes back, that will still go to this current fiscal year. Um, and they would issue it, it would just go in the rears and then it would be showing up in our audit.
Right, and, and part of why I asked Renee to specifically rea- reach out to the village finance person, so that she could potentially flag it. That's an approval. So we officially requested it.
Twice, no?
Yes.
It, it would seem though that your relationship with, with Regis would be the, the first step. And I think the, the administration have just been very black and white, he can't do anything until Drew says. Pay, he's not gonna pay, there's no I G A, he's not gonna. Put himself in a position to. I, I see it going somewhere, but various, but, once he's aware of it, then it'll just, it'll go through how quickly.
I mean, you could talk about, which you may already be thinking, but we just approved, you, the board just approved. Three quotes from C B I for security cameras, we're moving this very important infrastructure costs along. We just had our asbestos sampled, we may need abatement, I mean, it's not, there's no question, and he was here for the presentation. We have immediate needs. I told the board, um, the village, excuse me, the museum board. Why, and explained in an email why the village wouldn't be coming to the meeting, and explained that. There is this question of ten, of the Vale contribution of approximately ten thousand dollars that. Um, is being held at this time until a new I G A is, so museum knows too.
And, and I feel that some of the building costs that have been specific to the property at one two seven. That's kind of, that's the only one with an I G A, also support. Is the village gonna walk away from the property at one two seven? And not support the museum being there any longer?
But I can just, when I say like, throw my hat, I mean, like, help prepare, like, help me prepare something so that you. It can support your process.
Uh, that would be great, I'm gonna work on the, well, we'll see what happens tomorrow morning. Correspondence.
Yeah, I'm meeting with you after. I'm really interested to see how the museum will respond, I, um. I have my doubts based on things I've already heard from Kathy, but, you know, I appreciate a, a positive outlook. Um, that you have, and I may be surprised.
Very hopeful.
Yeah.
I think it would be great. There's a relationship that.
Yeah. All right, uh, our next agenda item, unless there's any other questions, comments. We'll go to back to carpet analysis and report.
So I, um, put eighteen and nineteen out of order, so skip eighteen and just go to nineteen, um. As Janie said, uh, Johnson Floors, um, came to present to the building and grounds committee. Um, prior to that, I had a full walkthrough of the building with the rep from Johnson Floors, Johnson Floors was recommended to us. By the architects that did the two thousand ten renovation. Because I had the architects, you may remember, come to the building and evaluate the carpet delamination across the building. And they recommended, I work with Johnson Floors, Johnson Floors is a known name in libraries, um, for forty. He did all of this analysis and quoting for free, um, which I incredibly appreciate. Um, what you have in front of you, uh, nineteen, section nineteen is the three levels of the library. Um, highlighted in different sections at different price points. Um, so as I talk through what you have in front of you, I just want to reference that. Um, so after analysis, um, and a tour and investigation. Um, the report that you have in front of you, the proposal, says that the reason the carpet is delaminating. Is because of the process, the method with which it was adhered to the floor. There are a couple of things at play, they used what Johnson Floors describes as a paint rolling method. As opposed to trowing the floor with those trow lines and the adhesive. Um, what that does is the trowing is something they do, and they don't use the paint rolling method at all. Um, because it does not provide the same level of adhesion and long-term benefits that the trowing method does. The other thing that they discussed was that the floors may not have been properly prepared and cleaned. Prior to, um, the carpet actually adhering. The other reason that this is happening, and it's frankly, it's happening in more high-traffic areas, is because of the traffic that's, um. So you notice the spaces in front of the opening, uh, the two doors into the library, those are where it's, um, delaminating pretty heavily. Um, one of my first weeks here, I saw the stro room, right around the time they had the furniture delivered. And I looked at the carpet, and I actually was able to pull up an entire square of the carpet. Um, in the stro room, and I didn't ask anybody at the time, but what I soon learned from the managers is that the carpet wasn't replaced for the stro room remodel. They covered it. And then they did the remodel on top of it. Um, but what that, what that I think caused is additional movement in delamination because of traffic. Going over it so much because of the construction. Another reason for delamination, if this library had gotten its carpets clean once a year, which I'm told it did. If the carpet was not adhered properly and not adhered together, moisture can come through the lines of the carpet. And actually reduce the adhesive quality of the, um, the, the slack or the, um, the glue. Um, inside, so the moisture that could have happened from our annual carpet cleanings could have further delaminated the carpet. Um, and so these are the various reasons, um, the carpet isn't, is in good shape in some places and not in good shape in other places, so. Um, he priced out the five sections that are the most. Um, in need of addressing, one of them is the first floor service desk with that. Um, big hole that we've taped over, um, the other part is near Eliza's desk. Um, that carpet was from the two thousand remodel with the addition. Um, and that is completely down, you know, to its, to the concrete. Um, and so this was presented to the building and grounds committee. For discussion, I'm making sure to present this to you all now, um, to evaluate the cost, um, potential. Um, for remediating it. None of this carpeting project, though, will be move, maybe moving forward until I get the results of the asbestos back. Um, because another aspect of this carpet, um, so for example, when this remodel was done on this part of the library, two thousand ten. The board had an option of, um, repouring concrete, pulling the tile out from this. Um, little vestibule here, this hallway, um, and resurfacing. Um, and that was not the option that was identified, and so under this carpet tile is just tile. And it's the original orange tile from nineteen seventies, which is, in my opinion, very likely to have asbestos. And so that's not to say we couldn't, um, put ti- could put new carpet over or re-adhere it, we still could. Um, but in some cases, you know, where in the first floor, the carpet tile has those really dip, those dips and valleys. The under floor needs to be fixed first, um, before new carpet can even be adhered. So, that's what you have in front of you, there's no action item to this, um. He's very friendly and very informative, he, I'd be happy to have him come to a meeting if you'd like to talk to him more. Um, but I would say his analysis was very thorough, um, he explained everything to me very clearly. And I was able to understand why the delamination has been happening. And so he, his goal, as he said to us in the building and grounds, was so that we could reuse as much carpet as we possibly could. Um, pull up what we could, if it's still in good shape. Um, re-adhere, uh, the adhesive in a trowing method, or fix the floors where it needs to be fixed for leveling. And so, that's what you have in front of you.
So where it says removed and salvaged, does that mean used elsewhere in our building?
Which area were you reading?
Price one, two, and three all say existing carpet tile would be removed and salvaged.
So in some cases, um, they can be salvaged, in other places they may not be, he won't know until he looks at the quality of the. Carpet underneath in terms of, but some, the padding might have to be replaced.
So if the tile's salvaged, does that mean reused in this building, or does it mean he takes it into inventory and potentially uses it somewhere?
We would use it ourselves, so for example, price one. I mean, it's the biggest area that is being, um, addressed. Um, some of those dips and bellies, um, the carpet may not be. In good enough quality anymore to keep and reuse, in that case, there may, we may have to use and find new carpet. Um, also, one thing that he did identify, and we talked about in building grounds, there is no carpet underneath. The shelves of the first floor library. So when the library had an opportunity to re-carpet this. They opted not to move the shelves, which is a costly um thing. Um, but if the library were to address carpeting now. And potentially have the plan integrate with a future iteration or design of this. We may want to consider moving those shelves and carpeting altogether. Um, because as it is, they cut right up to the shelves around, so there's no carpet underneath.
Yeah, that was my question. So like the, these kind of projects, how do they fit in with like, what are you looking for?
I mean, and I think it, it coincides very clearly, um. You know, there are aspects of the carpet that need to be fixed now because of safety issues. I mean, your desk, the staff desk. Um, the dips and bellies in the entryway, um, I would say that it's potential for a fall. I mean, I think those of you that have seen it or walked there, um. My recommendation would be to scope it as finely as possible so that we're not. Spending money on anything that we would have to pull up and replace later. Because the master plan project itself is going to take us through this year. And then the library board, you'll have options of discussing financing. And then depending on what you wanna do for financing, that may take another year out. So we need to keep maintaining the building as it is for public.
Right.
This seems like a necessary cost, in my opinion, um. And also, I really appreciated him kind of breaking it down into sections so that we could decide. And discuss, okay, well, maybe we'll do price one. And pay for them to move the shelves so that we can get all new carpet on that space. But maybe we wait on, you know. I was also really surprised that the pricing came in where it did. I thought it would be more, but that's. That's my opinion, um.
No, I was just kind of curious, like as we're looking at these projects, like. Is that how we decide moving forward that we're like, this is a necessary one, this is something that we can work into the master plan? And then do we tell Amber Anderson as we're doing these projects so they, or do we consult them? Or, you know, I don't, I just didn't know how the process works.
Yeah, I mean, we can decide ourselves. I mean, we can decide, is this a priority that needs to be fixed now? And if it is, then we fix it and we can decide how we fix it. Do we fix it and then, you know, still telling bird, well, we want new carpeting everywhere. I mean, that's where Janey was saying, well, maybe he has a small amount of carpet. That he could use from another job for Eliza's desk, you know, so we're not paying, you know, premium cost for this, this little box. Um, where her desk space is. But with the first floor, I mean, that, if that continues to be our entrance and we want to fix that all now. I'd say we'd probably wanna still level that floor, um, so. Yeah, these are some of those things. And a lot of this is, again, building related, but because of the costs related. I brought it to building and grounds because it's carpet and it relates to the master plan. I wanted to bring it here. All of these are under ten, so I could technically move forward, but I don't want to without at least some knowledge of the board first. Um, because it will also disrupt service. Um.
And I, I have a question, Renee. So the staff room, the staff room has a lot of people in it. I'm su- surprised that there's not a need.
No, that's not, so it's not that there's not a need, he just didn't assess it.
Okay.
The, the reason he came in for me to, was to talk about the carpet tiles coming up. And I prioritize specific spaces. That's not to say we might not be having these issues elsewhere. We might be. He just said, said, priced it out. So you're absolutely right. I mean, so that's kind of what to Janey, to Jenny's point. How much do we do now? How much should we do later? We don't know if that's gonna be the staff room in three years, you know. We're right now in this transition period, which I know I've mentioned to Bonnie and maybe Janey. Every building project, we're going to have to decide, do we do it now? What's the cost benefit analysis? Or do we wait?
When, I know you said that you feel like this is a priority. Can you rank that in terms of urgency? Because this is about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Absolutely. I'm not saying all five.
Yeah.
I would say price point one, um, this is the. The yellow highlighted location of the library, it's our biggest trafficked area. There are safety issues currently, um. I would also like to prioritize um Eliza's desk. If I had to pick which ones, because price point one includes the staff desk. Where we have that issue. And then Eliza's desk being another important staff space. I mean, I would also be open to any recommendations based on price point.
Um, I feel like this room is not the most heavily trafficked. I think it was identified because it's carpet tile stuck on vinyl.
Mm-hmm, and there are some places that are, it's coming up, but really not in all the places, like the exterior of the room. It's pretty tacky, it's not gonna come up unless he uses a tool. Um, but there are other spaces that are way worse.
So I would de-prioritize that. The stro room also not a very high-volume traffic area right now.
The actual plan at the time was to um. Not replace the carpet in the stro room because we figured we would be doing.
I mean, we don't know what the design of the floor, first floor will be in three, four, five years. We don't. And I, I appreciate that he's put it all in one. Because you want it to be cohesive regardless of what happens in that space.
So we're not looking, you're not looking for an action item on this right now?
So there's no action item on the agenda. I'm open to consensus. I mean, you could do a, ask for consensus technically. Any feedback from you all?
Well, is this, I, I think, feel like this is something that I'd rather refer to the building and grounds committee to make a recommendation to the director. And just inform the rest of the board.
That can happen too.
So how does, how does the full board feel about that as it goes forward on this carpet?
Yes.
And again, if you're in the library, you'll see there's yellow tape holding some of the tiles together. And also so that people, when they walk in, they can see that it's curling up a little bit, so hopefully they're avoiding the trip hazard, but it is there. Behind the front desk. I was here with Eliza one night with the gas leak. And I was behind the desk. I was like, wow, this is not safe. Um, so, okay. We'll refer to building and grounds to um advise the director. I'm gonna go forward.
Thank you, boy.
Carpet repair. Okay. Master plan.
So back to.
And right to Jenny's point. How does this all fit in?
How does this all fit in? Um, so section eighteen, again, this is the project plan with the multicolors, um, blue, green, and orange. One of the questions that you all had in your discussion of the master plan proposal was. Is there going to be a timeline? Is there going to be, you know, a specific um order of things? And, you know, I, I wanted to reassure you with an example of the project plan that they put together. Um, specifically for us, this is using a hundred and fifty days as an estimate. I can already tell you that this draft is already gonna be pushed out because um today is the sixteenth. And we are in no way, shape, or form even close to identifying community engagement. Um, so we had a kickoff meeting last week. Um, just very small group to talk about this project plan. And I identified, we identified where the pinch points were in the schedule. What needs to be expanded for timeframes, um, and you know, what can happen concurrently. I also wanted you to see all of the places where um board updates and board um feedback is going to be solicited. Um, and I opted for more than, you know, even just the average. Every library is different in terms of how much the board um gets updates and how much they're involved. But the board would have its own facilitated conversation with Sean and Joe from Amber Anderson. At an upcoming meeting to get feedback and to have your feedback incorporated into the plan. That date hasn't been identified yet.
So it's a public meeting, the whole board, but I believe the only topic would be the master plan.
Yes, yes, maybe checks, but. Um, so, right, so I wanted to provide this to you so you have an understanding of just the general timeframe. Like I said, it's going to be expanded a little bit, um, and the types of things that they'll be doing. Um, so what I really appreciated about this project plan is also that they've um sectioned it off in terms of um. Their needs, so the need of the plan, so who do we talk to? What information are we capturing? How are we capturing this information, surveys, so forth? Um, and then how are they, you know, putting their plans together and how are they going to um present it to the board? With that final deliverable being um the renderings for the three tiers. Um, incorporating feedback and all of that. Um, one thing I will add is we're finalizing our summer program newsletter, our summer newsletter. That'll be out in houses on June first. Um, I should say we're drafting it, we're not close to finalizing it. But um, this will include some dates for events that I wanna talk to the engagement committee about. For public engagement sessions. Whether they are an actual um drop-in, open house type, I've seen libraries do that. Vernon Hills, Vernon Area Library just got done with their master planning project. And the director is actually a Lake Left resident here and she's great. Um, they just had a very, uh, several sessions of an open house style where they had renderings, you could talk to the architects. Fill out forms and surveys right there. We have a five thousand dollar grant to incentivize people to come to these things. Um, so we'll be able to um utilize Julian when she's back um in a few weeks to be able to plan on that. So um, yeah, I just wanted to show this to you. Um, knowing that even though it's a draft, this is what the project is going to, to look like.
Thanks Renee, this was a request of the board. Appreciate it being available to us now. Any comments, questions on the master plan?
You also did ask for a P R piece that is more public-facing um about this process. And they also delivered that too. Um, and so they gave me a draft, it's like a release, a press release. I sent it to Janey because the way that's um, the communication's going to happen is Janey's going to issue a letter as. Chair of Building and Grounds and um longest-tenured uh trustee about the state of the building and all that we've done. But also following that is going to be this announcement from the library about the master planning process. So I think that'll be nicely aligned with communication.
Um, this is also something that Renee has provided copies to everyone. It's a glossy that Amber Anderson put together to congratulate their client, the Helen Long Library. On the conclusion of a twenty-year effort to um. Better serve the community with a new library. Their space study needs was conducted in two thousand one. They went to referendum in two thousand sixteen. Then probably had some COVID issues, um, but their, their new library has, has opened. And so this is like another sort of.
Yeah, we got.
I guess it's a P R piece for Amber Anderson, so thank you. The library, but also I'm sure the library has copies on their circulation desk.
I received all eight of them. I got one too the other day, so.
Alright, so we have one more agenda item correspondence and then, so I feel like we're in the home stretch.
You, um, the next topic is.
Next topic is ours pilot.
So we have completed three months of the pilot. So we're halfway through. The numbers I have to share with you today are for March and you might remember last month I said. March is going to be a little bit more tricky because of the staffing that we were already experiencing. Um, so I'll just skip right to staff leave first to talk about that.
Oh, so we're looking at. Not, I, when you said the numbers, I thought you meant this.
Oh, no, sorry. I think this is, yeah, so we're looking at the report first. Um.
Myself and them, I.
Oh, yes.
Twenty-one and top.
You're fine, sorry. So column three, basically what I would say is you're gonna see the same type of ratios between Mondays and Tuesdays. Um, we had more visits in March, so the ratios, the numbers increased, but the ratios are still the same. Except for Saturdays, you'll see this in the heat map, March Saturdays were through the roof. Um, we had programming, we had busyness, it was, um, these are great numbers. Um, the next section under staff leave, as you know, I've reported about staff leave. Um, I think the most telling number is the last one, the leave percentage. Um, we went from thirteen point three percent in January up to nineteen point nine in February. Up to twenty-six point three percent in March. Um, a lot of that is attributed to um the existing staff leaves, but also staff vacation. I mean, it was spring break. Um, people did go away on vacation, those that had that time. Um, and so I, I just wanted to share that. This, the staff leave is always kind of a more unpredictable number to track, but it is interesting to see. What we've experienced for this, the past three months and even looking back, comparing it to what happened last fall. And starting to try and get some. Uh, understanding of our staffing um and how it relates to serving the public. I will say that um the only reason we canceled one program this month. Um, was due to a conflict with the presenter. Um, and so uh there were no staffing-related cancellations for any programs. Um, we did remove two hours for passports because of Martha's leave, she added two and so she's out now. Um, I would say that in general, March was um a little heavier on the management team. For covering desk and covering P I C. Um, we are also planning ahead for staff absences in May, which we know, we had a lovely sprinkle today. For um one of our staff members who's expecting her third baby. Um, and we have a couple of staff vacations planned and Eliza's been doing an amazing job because it's been affecting her department. Um, we canceled the May trivia program. Knowing, knowing the staffing that we are dealing with, we um canceled May trivia. We let our trivia participants know in April so that we can accommodate scheduling in the, in the building, which is the number one priority. Um. So moving on to um the actual heat map. Um, what I would say is, you know, you have now three months to look at. You know, my, my recommendation will continue to be to evaluate evening hours because we're not seeing any attendance in evenings. Um, I'm pleased to see our Saturdays as, you know, robust as they have been. Um, uh, and I think that. What we're probably going to see is our numbers increase, cause if you look at a fiscal year in terms of visits. Um, spring and summer are our busiest months and so it's only going to increase in terms of the number. Um, but in terms of the ratio, Monday afternoons versus Tuesday evenings, Tuesday evenings and Thursday evenings. I think we're gonna see more of the same because that's what we've been seeing. Um. So, you know, March was, March was a tough month. Um, we provided a variety of solutions. Um, we never left the desk, the desks unstaffed. We've maintained safety for all the ways that we've wanted to do that in this current pilot. Um, we've kept work going, no disruption of service. Um, some projects were deferred to later, but you know, as our priority is the patrons in the building. Um, we've kept that um at our, you know, at the forefront and we're able to maintain the same level of service despite challenges. Um, with staffing. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Um, there's some additional reflection in the monthly report. Yes.
You look at Tuesday for the whole of March, we have thirteen people coming in between six and eight.
Correct.
Oh, that's the whole of March, not an average for Tuesday from seven, eight, nine.
Wait, what are you asking? Sorry.
Is this, yeah, that's, that's kind of a question. It says nine and four, that's not thirteen visits in the whole of March.
So.
The average for a Tuesday.
It's the average for a Tuesday at a six to seven o'clock. Thank you. So then when I pulled those numbers out on my monthly report. I added them together to show you the average from those time periods. Yeah, it's not a total.
And so a reminder, Monday, we. And so a reminder, Monday we close at six.
Mm-hmm.
So the numbers you see afterward.
Cleaning crew, cleaning crew comes Monday, Wednesday, Friday in the evening.
Sometimes we have committee meetings after hours on a Monday or Wednesday when we close at six. Similarly.
So trivia, now that we close on Mondays um at six, trivia can go on. Um, and we're in the building, you know, prepping to go, um, but we don't have public.
Renee, any comments about pilot hours? I have a quick question, has been any public comment at the desk through comment cards?
I check in every month, I didn't have enough comment cards, I think it was just one and it was more of the same, um. Uh, I check in every month with staff during staff meetings, I'll be doing that again Friday. Um, nothing new um in terms of a different comment, otherwise it would have highlighted it for you. Um, and uh the main Pete thing that people are asking about is Sundays. Staff report, that's the thing that people are hearing. Um, what we are seeing is a influx of phone calls in the late afternoon, asking what time are we closing, what time are we closing? Um, and I think it's just because people have started to learn that we have a different set of hours. And they just want to double check, and so we get those calls before we close on Mondays and Wednesdays a lot.
Would it help to put up an automated message?
So we, so. I mean, we're technically open, so when some libraries, they, um, someone calls, it goes to an automated message and it filters through. We don't do that, one of the things I think is lovely about our library is that when you call a real-life human answer is to pick up the phone. Um, so we do still provide that quality service and it doesn't go to an automated, it does if we're closed.
Okay.
Um, so yes, it talks about our hours and that was changed right away when we did that hours. Um, I would say in general, this pilot is really supporting the library and the organization. Um. Is it supporting the needs of the community? That's a totally different question. But I would say based on staffing, based on um. Uh, programming, based on, you know, the level of um visit counts. I think that it is a, a really effective model in what we're doing right now. Now, if staffing changes or if, you know, it could always change again, but I just want to share my, my midpoint evaluation with you all.
Ready to move on to library correspondence?
Yeah, you have four items of re- for review. The first is the board retreat um article. Um, the second is the proclamation that Regis read in person at the committee. Excuse me, it wasn't the committee, it was at the village meeting, Sandy and I were in attendance. Um, he actually asked us to speak, which I didn't anticipate, but I was happy to share some few words. Sandy introduced herself and um is getting more comfortable getting out there, which I really appreciate about her. Um, I asked you for a copy of the signs, but I, I haven't received it yet, so you have the original copy. Um, Regis was really generous in his positive comments about the library and its role in the community. And um he helped write this, um, which I appreciate. Um, I, I think I emailed about this, um, uh, oh yeah, Bonnie did.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I checked again that they are kicking witness lifts again, so I don't know, something must have happened.
I hope today.
Today.
It didn't appear like they were taking witness lifts.
And I must have totally checked wrong, I apologize. So I'm, I'm very pleased about this, we're one of the first in the country to have legislation like this. Um, based on what happened last summer, I think this is really necessary. And then um the final, one of the final pieces you have is the report from uh. Um, State of American Libraries, each of you has a copy. Um, and I thought if you were interested to review, this came from the American Libraries Association. It definitely reflects some of the trends that we are seeing locally here. Um, but also some national trends too. Um, there's a new list of um books that um have been identified as the, the top ten. Um, most censored, most requested for banning. Uh, we'll be doing something for ban books week again this year, not sure what. And then the last page of your packet is the grant award letter that I received. For the library, um, five thousand dollars per hour, meeting engagement initiative.
Fantastic. And on a, and on high note.
Yes.
Any questions about the course meetings? All right. Um, other business, item twelve. Statement of economic interest is due May first, so the deadline is fast approaching, two weeks from now. Please fill those out if you haven't already done so. Also, a reminder that at our May meeting, we'll be electing officers. And they're elected every year. Um. Any other business? None, is there executive, is executive session needed tonight? Nope. I'm hoping to motion adjourn by some who, nine o'clock, trustee church, thank you. Trustees.